It's 6:00 PM and January 9th, 2020. As newly appointed interim superintendent in accordance with board policy BBA and Title 20 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, as Board Secretary, I hereby call this me Pickens County Board of Education to order. My honor to welcome all of our board members, including Sue Finley, and Joelle Youngblood, Donna Enos, Steve Smith, and Tucker Green to the first regular meeting of 2020. Also present is longstanding school board attorney Phil Landrum, who serves as our parliamentary. As elected or appointed officials, we welcome you. At this time, I've asked Pickens County High School Principal Chris Wallace to seek God's blessings and guidance on your deliberations tonight. Following the invocation, Tate Elementary School Principal Stephanie Hall will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Williams? Correction, Mr. Wallace.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we bow before you at this moment to ask for guidance and blessings upon this meeting. Please provide divine direction and wisdom to our leaders to make decisions that are centrally focused on the students we serve. We ask that you place a hedge protection around our students, teachers, staff, and all stakeholders with continuing our school year. We thank you for the opportunity that we have been given to serve them. It is an enormous but rewarding and worthwhile endeavor. May your name be lifted up and glorified with our actions, thoughts, and words this day and every day. We ask for these and all blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace and Paul. Your next responsibility is to approve the agenda for tonight. Are there changes needed in the published proposed agenda? I have one Georgia Department of Education memorandum of agreement added as item D under action items. Are there other amendments to be considered? Hearing none, then in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, you'll vote on the amendments one at a time, and then the main motion. First proposed amendment, is there a motion to add GDOE MOA to the agenda?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed, like signs. Motion passes, five zero. Hearing no other amendments, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of GDO MOA?
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor, second?
I'll second.
And discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as amended, please raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion to approve the agenda passes, five zero. The agenda is approved. Next, order of business is the election of the school board's chair for 2020. In accordance with policy BBA, the first item of business at the first regular board meeting of the new year is to elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson. The board member receiving the majority of the votes cast for the position of chairperson shall be the board chairperson, and the board member receiving the majority of the votes cast for the position of vice chairperson shall be the board vice chairperson. Chairperson and vice chairperson shall take office immediately upon their election. At this time, I open the floor to nominations for the chairperson.
Dr. Webb, I'd like to nominate Steve Smith as our chairperson for the year 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Smith's nomination has been placed, uh, Mr. Smith has been placed in nomination.
I'd like to nominate Tucker Green.
Mr. Green has been nominated. We have two nominations. At this time, you're ready to call for the question. I always like to give you a chance to back out. This is the last chance. All those in favor of Mr. Smith, raise your hand. One vote. All those in favor of Mr. Green, one, two votes. Those casting the votes, Mr. Green, you've been elected chairman again for 2020. Mr. Smith, thank you for your indulgence and willing to serve in that capacity as well. At this time, I move that the, I'm sorry, I asked Mr. Green if he would conduct the election for vice chair.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Next item of business, selection of the school board vice chair for 2020. This time, I'm going to open up the floor. Are there any motions for nomination for board vice chair?
I nominate Donna Enos.
Have one nomination for Donna Enos.
I'd like to nominate Steve Smith for vice chair.
One nomination for Steve Smith. Are both comfortable serving in that role? This time, we'll call the votes. All in favor of Donna Enos to serve as vice chair? Two. All in favor of Steve Smith to serve as vice chair? One. Only two, one vote. Congratulations, Ms. Enos, you are the vice chair for 2020. Thank you both for your willingness to serve. This time, next item on the agenda would be item seven, superintendent report. Dr. Webb, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Chairman Green. Let me first say how grateful I am to the board's confidence in appointing me as the interim superintendent effective December 20 through June 30, or earlier if properly relieved. For the record, it's my intent to lead this school system within the code of ethics, in compliance with federal, state, and local laws, in accordance with the local board of education approved policies and legal directives, and in conformity with administrative procedures and in concert with this community. The first part of my report, I'll call on our chief financial officer, Amy Smith, to present our monthly financial update.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. As Ms. Severs pulls up our general fund report, we'll report our general fund revenue collected through December 2019 is 60.38% of our budgeted revenue. Our expenditures were at 36.72% of the approved budget. I will always call your attention to the top line there of our ad blorum taxes. We are at just over 88% collection as of the end of December. Of course, we will still have property tax money coming in over the next few months, and we will keep you updated on those items. Do you have any questions on the general fund? Give Ms. Severs a chance to hop over to the SPOS report. This is our running SPOS total. As you can see, our collection for the month was $466,637.69. It brings our 12-month average to $450,978.69. As you can see, we continue to climb gradually each month, and so we're pleased with that and will keep you updated on that total. And then we'll skip over to, if we could go back to the summary of the report. The additional information on our SPOS account, we earned interest of $1,145.73 for the month of December. We did receive a portion of our GSFIC funds on our Pickens Junior High School project. You do not receive all the funds until you're pretty much done with the project, but we did receive just over $800,000 that we are due. We received, I have to focus here too. $725,000. So that ACH deposit did go into our account in the month of December. Our expenditures for the month were $1,445,380, and our month in balance was $2,394,91.75. And as always, I'm happy to report, we have no debt. Do you have any questions? That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That's a good report. Call on our assistant superintendent, Tony Young, to update us on our student attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our attendance awards for the month of December. We'll start with staff. We'll look at the staff attendance, and for the month of December 2019, our winner is going to be Harmony Elementary at 96.8%. Just come on, please. Give your certificate for your staff. Over 96% in the month of December is pretty awesome.
Thank you.
Tell them we said that. That is great. Moving on to the student attendance for the month of December. This one's usually a tough one, but gotta give props to everybody that works in attendance, all of our principals, our attendance support teams, everything that goes on there, because those are some impressive numbers. Our winner for the month is going to be the junior high with an attendance rate of 96.15%. Mr. Thompson will begrudgingly give you the banner so that you can fly that thing proudly at your school, and you'll notice that all of our attendance numbers are in excess of 93% during the month of December. There's a lot that goes on in that month. There was a lot of sickness out there, so even with all of those things that were occurring, our attendance numbers were very good. And so that is a testament to parents. A lot of you are here tonight, we thank you for helping us get them here and so we can get them educated. Our dropout report for the month, I'm very happy to report, this one's some small writing, very happy to report that for the month of December, I do not have any dropouts to report to the board. There's a big zero up there, which brings our hand total for the school year to 10 dropouts. You remember last month, I told you that we had gained one back. That student is now re-enrolled and actively back into the school system, so we have 10 total dropouts for the first semester of the school year. While 10 is a good number, any number above zero is a bad number, and so we will continue to strive to keep that number as low as we possibly can. There's a lot of work that goes into doing that. We have an awesome faculty, we have awesome administrators, we have a really good school system, and our kids like to come to it, and that makes all the difference in the world. So my hat is off to all of you that had a hand in that. And that will conclude my attendance reports, Dr. Webb.
It's an excellent report, thank you. And again, thanks to our principals and our staff for the hard work you do in encouraging our students to come to school and learn. I'll also ask Mr. Young to update us on operations and construction.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. We'll do maintenance first. As you can see up there, maintenance had a productive break. While the rest of us are enjoying Christmas break and a lot of the other breaks that we get, maintenance is out there working. They don't get near as many break days as the rest of us do, and this is one of those moments where they are able to get a lot of work orders caught up, they're able to get into the buildings without there being any traffic in there, and so they were able to get a lot of things accomplished over the Christmas break. There were some roof leaks. Everybody knows that we have experienced tremendous amount of rain, and along with that rain, at one point in time over the break, we had some wind. For those of you that have been down at the high school, before you know it, the wind blows down there all the time, and there was a day over Christmas break that the wind really blew down there at one point. As a matter of fact, airward gusts recorded at 60 miles an hour, and it did some damage to the softball, baseball complex. The outfield fencing was blown over. It is already in the midst of being repaired. Stacy does a tremendous job working with our construction managers. There was an insurance claim on that, but the good news is that between the insurance claim and between the contractors, we're going to be able to take care of that issue and have the cost of it covered. So by the time baseball is ready to get rolling, everything is going to be ready for them. And for all of you that are here tonight, I would advise you to go down and check out the baseball, softball complex. It is an impressive facility. Can't wait to see the first ballgame. We start to believe that they're about to start practicing. It's gonna be cold. Well, haven't gotten cold yet, but I'm sure we'll be watching a baseball game in some cold weather. Moving on to transportation report. All is good in transportation, and anytime they can say that, you've said a mouthful. It is absolutely amazing what we are able to accomplish on a daily basis with transportation. Everything that we report here, from maintenance to transportation to food service. Food service did not have a report. All things are well with food service, but when you stop and think about the things that we accomplish above and beyond just teaching these kids, it is absolutely amazing what we are able to do. We're able to get them here safely, we're able to get them into warm or cold classrooms, depending on which we need, and we're able to get them on a good warm meal. And so when you can do those things, you've won for the day, most of the time. And my hat's off to everybody in maintenance, everybody in transportation, and everybody in food service. Without those groups, nothing else is gonna happen. So thanks to all of you that are involved in that part. And that will conclude, Dr. Webb, my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Young, and that concludes the superintendent's reports, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Thank you, Ms. Smith and Mr. Young, for those important updates. We'll move right along to section eight, action items. First action item on the agenda, approval of personnel. Dr. Webb, do you have any personnel recommendations?
I do, Mr. Chair. I recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented to the board.
Without objection, do I hear a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? If I have none opposed, thank you. Second action item is approve the 2020 regular board meeting schedule. Dr. Webb, do you have anything on that?
Yes, I recommend it. The board's been provided a copy of the proposed 2020 regular board meeting schedule. Pending any suggested changes by the board members, I recommend its approval.
The will, for public knowledge, this will continue the tradition of having, holding our regular board meetings on the second Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM, with one exception, in April, the second Thursday falls under, or spring break, so it has just been moved to the third Thursday in April. Without any objection, do I hear a motion to approve the 2020 regular board meeting schedule?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Enos, do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Youngblood, any further discussion? All in favor? If I have none opposed, thank you. Item number C, approval of minutes. Dr. Webb?
Minutes of recent board meetings have been available for board review. Pending additions, deletions, or changes by board members, I recommend their approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the board minutes as presented?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Enos, any further discussion? All in favor? If I have none opposed, thank you. And the amended item, item number D, memorandum of agreement with the Department of Education. Dr. Webb, can you touch on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our staff and school representatives have met with the representatives in the Georgia Department of Education, and I recommend approval of the memorandum of agreement to provide targeted assistance at Harmony Elementary School, which will lead to its removal from the targeted support improvement list.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Without objections, do I hear a motion to approve that memorandum of agreement with the Department of Education?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Enos, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Section nine, board comments. Are there any board comments? None being, we'll move on to section 10, public participation. In accordance with our policy, we've had four requests for public participation. As is tradition, I will read the public participation policy for the board of education that was originally adopted in 1994 and last revised in 2004. To be placed on the agenda, a citizen must request to appear before the board in writing at least five days prior to the regular monthly meeting of the board. The request must state clearly the topic or issue to be addressed. Each citizen whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make their comments, but the total time allotted to citizen participation will be limited to 20 minutes. Citizens may introduce additional concerns to writing and submit to the board of education if five minutes does not provide sufficient time. Where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the board reserves the right to further limit discussions should they become repetitive. While citizens may use their allotted time to take serious issue with board decisions, the board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual board members or board employees. When issues arise that stimulate high community interest, the board may schedule special meetings specifically to invite public comment. In those circumstances, the board will establish special guidelines for participation. The board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentations, but will take those comments and questions under advisement. Again, that is the public participation policy for the board of education as it has been since 1994, last revised in 2004. We had, as I said, four requests, and we will just go in order that we receive them. Ms. Martha will have a timer on the screen for you to be able to see. So first up, we will have Dr. Robert Keller. Dr. Keller, just whenever you begin. Ms. Martha will start the timer.
I would like to start my address to Tucker Green, who is our representative of our school district, and I voted for Tucker to be on this school board. When this occurred, when it resulted in the resignation of Carlton Wilson, I spoke with you, I spoke with your fellow board members, and I read the newspaper, and from what I understand, there was a general statement of loss of confidence in regards to Dr. Wilson. And as I begin to investigate further, what happened was something so far removed from loss of confidence. I watched the prior board meetings, and what I saw was a lack of business acumen on your part and a stunning display of immaturity with regards to your station. Board members are responsible for praising in public and criticizing in private. It's a cardinal sin for a board member to criticize in public, but watching the videos, as I hope most of you will, you repeatedly berated Superintendent Wilson in regards, and other board members did, repeatedly berated him in regards to what turned out to be trivial events. So once formally, you finally got it into a private session, you failed to arrive at a consensus, and we had this three to two decision that ultimately resulted in Carlton's resignation. I think that we're probably going to see a lot more of the three to two decisions, just like we've seen tonight. Not only was there not a consensus in this arriving at the decision, two publicly stated that they were not even informed of the situation. I'm worried how many more times we'll see this three to two decision, and as you direct the school system in the wrong direction. Then it come to Byron Long at the last election, said, "I'm sure that Tucker has an eye towards future in politics, I'm just not sure the school system is the right place for him." On behalf of my colleagues at the Atlantic Coast Conservancy, who are all back here, we have not lost confidence in Dr. Wilson. During his tenure, we have invested a large amount of hard-earned resources on the snack pack program, retiring of lunchroom debt across all schools. We provided funds for cheerleaders, a marquee for the entrance to the high school, uniforms for the Pride of Pickens marching band. Our most recent investment was at the behest of Dr. Wilson in regards to the REACH program. The Georgia REACH program is a needs-based mentoring and scholarship program that provided for 10 students to be mentored through their high school career with hopes of being secondarily educated. Funding for next year's program will also be provided due to us and the Sheriff's Department for these students. He made our school system, Carlton, made our school system a better place for our students. On behalf of everyone that's gathered at our behest, we have not lost confidence in Carlton. During his tenure, Carlton has presided over multimillion-dollar capital improvement, the restructuring of the school system, remodeling of the junior high, renovation of the football stadium, construction of the baseball complex, internalization of the alternative school, relocation of the Cobble School of Nursing from Reinhardt, and procurement of scholarships for Pickens County students to attend that nursing program. How do you lose confidence in someone that has accomplished so much, all the betterment for the Pickens County students? Tucker, shame on you for generating this false narrative about Dr. Wilson, and shame on me for not paying attention to Byron Long when he so appropriately said that he warned disobliquely about your lack of career experience.
Amen.
To the board as a whole, to the board as a whole, to the board members, Sue Finley accurately described a scenario whereby a formal mentoring program should have been put in place under normal circumstances when a faculty member or administrator has a perceived weakness. This improves job satisfaction, increases commitment, reduction in turnover, greater productivity, and enhanced ethos. Mentor is someone who usually is a cheerleader, firmly believing in the ability and worth of the protege, a colleague in some work environment, and individual dedicated in their career. Dr. Webb, since you were in the position, now I would suggest that you would be an ideal candidate to mentor Dr. Wilson, and with that said, I respectfully request that you, as the board of education, reappoint Dr. Wilson as superintendent of the public, of the Pickens County school system, and afford him the due process that he so justly deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keller, for those thoughts. Next, public participant, Mr. Joey Weaver.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to stand here tonight. After the appointment of chair and vice chair, I have to at least commend you on consistency for making poor decisions. So I want to say, Dr. Wilson was voted in April 26 of 2017 to be our superintendent. He was a single finalist from 49 applicants. Prior to his career in education, Dr. Wilson served 10 years as a law enforcement officer, 14 years as a director of security, loss prevention and risk management, and 10 years as a director of human resources. He joined Pickens County School District in 96. He held positions as a teacher, assistant, principal, and principal. I won't even go into the long list of charities and mentorships that he's been a major, major part of. He earned his doctorate in education degree in educational leadership and a concentration in school law and finance from the University of Georgia. I would say that's a pretty impressive resume and being the youngest school board member, I think, in the state of Georgia. I'm sure you aspire to hopefully have one like that as well, one day. I can say that this board has been, for the majority, pretty silent in regard to the reason Dr. Wilson was forced to resign as superintendent, although oddly, we did receive an email and a post from No Pickens requesting community endpoint. A little late, but we got that. I'd like to offer my input, refer back to my opening remarks, you guys are looking for input on who would be a great superintendent. That resume I just read, the gentleman sitting back there, that's your perfect superintendent. That is the, so you didn't have to use a company called Servant Monkey to send out something which oddly didn't allow us to give any input, only answer dictated yes and no questions. You know, I don't stand here, a lot of people here know I serve on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of people here know I serve in the role of a law enforcement officer. I'm not here for either one of those positions. I speak because I have something here called three tax bills. I own two homes and a vacant piece of property in this county, and I pay a lot of school taxes, and that is why it gives me the voice to come here and express to you how disappointed I am in the decision and your lack of performance. It's my understanding also that this board has never provided Dr. Wilson with a, any type of employee appraisal or evaluation, from my understanding. You know, as somebody who owns a business and someone who's been in business for a long time, and also a supervisor, you know, it's kinda hard to fix it if you don't know it's broken. So if you didn't give him any type of employee of performance appraisal, I think that's also a failure on your part as well. This terrible decision the three of you have made, it's gonna cost the Pickens County taxpayers like me in excess of $230,000 in lost tax money that could have been better spent to educate our kids. We're having to pay a interim superintendent, which kind of puzzles me why we have an assistant superintendent, why he doesn't sort of like step into that role. I guess I'm just confused by that, I don't quite understand how that works. You know, and again, you guys asked for input from the community, and I'm telling you right now, if you're in tune at all with social media or talk to any of the residents in this county, I've found very few people who support the decision that you made, the very poor decision that you made. So you wanna poll around and start talking to your constituents, which last time I checked, when we vote for you, that's actually what you're supposed to do, is kinda listen to our input. We're telling you, you made a horrible mistake, and unless it is rectified, you also will be removed from your position. I can tell you that at the end of the day, we are in charge, not you. Okay? I just wanna- I just want to clear that up and make that. So you have the ability to rectify the decision that you've made. From my understanding, you can rescind the receiving of his letter of resignation. That is your opportunity to do the right thing. And I'd like to last say to Dr. Wilson, you did not fail this county, we failed you. We failed you by asking the report to a board that does not know what they're doing. And I don't mean that personally, but I'm telling you right now, you made horrible decisions, you're obviously continuing to make horrible decisions, and you know, those seniors for Pickens, I remember I wrote a op-ed in 2015 supporting the Board of Education, even though my husband and I have never had kids nor will ever have kids, but I've always supported our school system because I thought they were good stewards of our tax dollars, and I fought the seniors for change folks and told them they made a huge mistake trying to gut the finances. Well, if you've got $230,000 to flow, I might be changing my position. Those seniors might need to go ahead and get approved to pay a little less educational tax. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next up, we have Mr. Daniel Tenen.
I'd like to start off by asking the board a question, the five of you. How many of you all really think that the majority of Pickens County was behind your decision to remove Carlton Wilson? Can I see a show of hands? So let the record state that none of them cared about what we thought. And so Steve, I have a question for you, and this is probably a question that everybody in this room wants to know. What's the real reason why he was removed?
Right.
You have no idea. Sue, I'm going to ask you the same question. What's the real reason why Carlton Wilson was removed?
I was not told anything except that the community had lost confidence in him, but I've been told...
The community did, or three board members did?
Well, that's for you to decide. Would you like to hear my personal opinion?
Yes, ma'am, I would love to, and I think everybody else in here would.
Well, my personal opinion is that Dr. Wilson was encouraged to resign because he conducted himself as a professional, and that some board members were interfering in day-to-day operations and expected them to be consulted.
So what you're telling me is a board member, so everybody knows, a board member's day-to-day, a board member's obligation is policy and budget. The day-to-day operations belong strictly to the superintendent, but the problem Carlton was having was the board was trying to insert themselves into his job.
Some of the board members.
Some of the board members, and we probably know, you just seen how the voting went, the same three voted, that voted Carlton out, sit there and voted in assistant superintendent, I mean, you know, it's the same three. So if, I mean, to me...
They will tell you that I'm wrong, and they'll tell you that I didn't see things clearly. That's my opinion.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, to see things clearly. Now I'm going to ask the three of y'all that voted him, can you tell me why? Because these two can't really, they have no reason. Can Ms. Youngblood, can you tell me why?
We're not supposed to comment here in this section, this is part of board policy to any...
Okay. I don't have the right to ask these questions?
You do, sir, but they're taken under advisement, this is not a back and forth, this is just public participation.
Okay. So, well, I want to speak a little bit about what Jody had mentioned about Carlton's evaluation. I have it here. In 2017 and 18, Carlton got a stellar evaluation from the previous school board. Is this school, this school board, can you tell me what his evaluation was? Or can you tell me if he was even evaluated? Because I understand as your contracted responsibility as a board member, that you're to give him an annual evaluation, and it never was gave to him. So is that not breach of contract on the board's behalf?
Again, sir, this is not a back and forth, this is...
Well, I'm just trying to clear the air here for the people that have come to hear why Mr. Dr. Carlton Wilson was just booted out within 24 hours, and none of us knew nothing about it, others hearing it on fettered news. Well, you know, I'm going to end what I have to say, nobody's going to answer my questions, you can see, I mean, to me, if, I appreciate Steve, Sue, sharing with me what you did. We can see the people that were behind Carlton. We have no, as a community, we still have no answers on why our superintendent was ousted, but I'm going to ask the board member like everybody else does at this point, that you reinstate Dr. Wilson, because you can't give none of the community a legitimate reason for what you did. And I'm the same as Jody, when it comes down to voting back in, don't be voting back in.
Thank you, Mr. Tenen. The final public participant, Ms. Sam, Ms. Cheryl Sams.
Most of you know I'm going to try to keep it down. The first thing I'm going to ask is, Mr. Tucker, if you're such a professional, will you please stop chewing gum during the meeting? You're not allowed so in class. Now, since y'all are not going to answer any of my questions, I want to know, when can you schedule a time when you will answer our questions?
Yes.
Unless you've forgotten, you work for us, not the other way around. And if you think I don't know what I'm talking about, yeah, I'm on a council board, okay? So I know you've got to listen to your constituents, or you're not going to be there very long.
Amen.
Now, my first thing is, how did this qualify as an emergency meeting per the Georgia Code? It did not. And Tucker, you know it did not. An emergency meeting can only be when it affects the public safety, public personnel, or public property. How did this, how did this qualify for that? And my question is, we pay you $100 a meeting per day, well, why are there so many called meetings? Did somebody have a bill that they needed to pay? And why are these meetings called? If we are required to give five days' notice to speak before the board, why do you do all these called meetings at a time when most of your constituents are at work? We don't have ample time to get our name on here. Why do you do that? Apparently you do, you can send out all the surveys you want, but you've already shown us you do not want community input.
Exactly.
In nowhere.
Exactly.
And if you can send out a survey asking us our opinion on the next person you hire, why didn't you send us one to ask us about letting Mr. Wilson go?
Yes.
That's right.
Why? Now, I want to be honest, and Mr. Wilson, I apologize, if you're here, I don't know if you are or not, but when I first heard that Mr. Wilson had gotten, I thought, what? You know, because I really didn't know the man. But the one thing I did know was his school system, because I've worked in it. I've watched the teachers and parapods, bus drivers, lunchroom staff, everybody, lose confidence in those that were in charge. The one thing I noticed when Mr. Wilson came in was right the opposite.
Amen.
You're the, you, you go in and you look at the teachers, you know, you go in and those people were just, you know, okay, I know that they're at work. You go in now, and those people are smiling, they are excited, they are ready to do something with our children. And no, I don't have any children, but I have a niece that's in this school system, and I have watched her. And you tell me what is wrong with a man that gets the people in that school system that are working, not the board members, I couldn't care less, the people that are involved with the children on a day-to-day basis. When they get a child, a five-year-old and a six-year-old, when she gets up in the morning, she is excited to go to school. She gets out of the car and she says, "I'm going to have an awesome day today." Well, that didn't happen before, so you made a huge mistake. And I'm going to try to find out a way to see if we can't force you to resign.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Green, you said this was an emergency. How can it be an emergency when I asked you what y'all were going to do about all the checks and automated drafts that Mr. Wilson was supposed to sign? Your response to me was, this was not done on a whim. We have things thought out and have taken care of it. Well, again, if you thought it out, it wasn't on a whim, and you made preparations on this banking, then how could it be an emergency? How?
It can't.
Exactly. And Tucker, if you want to see the text you sent me on my phone, I still have it, so you can't deny what you said. Now, I think, you know, when I think of somebody, and most people know how I feel about children, when I think about what you three have done that affects the children in this community, I am appalled, absolutely appalled. You don't care anything about our kids. You don't. You really don't. And so, so why? Why would you disrupt something that was so right? The school system had improved, the morale had improved, but y'all don't care about that, you just care about the fact that he hurt your feelings. Oh, well, sorry. You hurt my feelings.
Ms. Sams, time has expired.
That's fine. But I will say this as I leave, I'm qualified to not have to pay school tax. I have chosen to do that because I felt like it was being well taken care of, but I now, after seeing what y'all are wasting money on, I think I'm going to go and apply to not have to pay school tax.
Thank you, Ms. Sams.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, based on the community response that we have heard, I would like to make a motion that we reinstate Dr. Wilson, that we reconsider...
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Landerman has asked me to state my motion again. As I said, based on the response we've received from the community tonight and other times, email and Facebook and all of those things, I would like to ask that we reconsider Dr. Wilson's employment status and reinstate him as superintendent of Pickens County Schools.
Yes.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Yes.
I'll have a motion in a second, but I'm going to call on the parliamentarian because the agenda has already been approved.
I neither, by the way.
You do, as a member of the Assembly, you do have the right to make a motion.
There is an issue as to whether or not it complies with the Open Meetings Act regarding such a matter of the motion, but as a member of the Assembly, you can make a motion.
I have a motion and a second.
It is basically seen as a motion to make to amend the agenda, which is usually overlooked.
Think about your future.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your short future.
And you didn't care about the open record.
I'm sorry, this is a business meeting, your time has been expired.
You've got a motion, second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Two, opposed. Three, that motion fails.
Well, when you know that, we go.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor? If I have none opposed, we are adjourned at 6:45 p.m.
We, the citizens of Pickens County, would like a meeting... Excuse me, Tucker, but you're out of the meeting, so I'm going to have my say. We, the people, would like a meeting where we have to answer our questions.
Amen.
This is not fair that you can just sit there and ignore our feelings.
And you go.
And that's exactly, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Magics.
And I agree, and I think that we need to definitely have some transparency and some answers for sure.
Absolutely.
I mean, you tell me why on your calendar you can't list your five o'clock meeting as a called meeting executive session. You're misleading.
I think it's time for a recall.
So Tucker, well, I think so too.
We give the people a vote.